There's a scheduled to be called Greer City Council Workshop. Called and convened for the meeting discussion in regards to curbside collection and road systems within the city. Meeting's been called and convened on December the 5th, 2014, and will be held prior to our regular council meeting. Having called the meeting to order, we will proceed with presentations.
Thank you, Mayor. A member of the council, what we are, we'll attempt to cover both subject areas separately. We thought we would start off with the curbside collection program. Wanted to spend a couple of moments briefing council about what we do and how we do it, and some of the issues that we have, we've been running into. But we certainly, but we certainly want to make sure that we are providing ample opportunity for feedback and questions, so that we are understanding your issues and concerns relative to curbside collection as well, and we've got a good understanding of how we may want to proceed. So with that being said, I've asked Skipper if he would, if he would just, would lead us off in giving some explanation of what we are involved in relative to curbside, and some of the challenges that we may run into. This is informal for us, so we certainly ask that if you have questions as we are presenting information, we ask that, ask those now, and we'll, we'll certainly make sure that we kind of keep that moving. If we don't know what you're inquiring about, we'll certainly get an answer and get it returned back to us, and, and I'll continue to offer some feedback as well as our staff, so. Skipper?
You know, we've had a change with the owner's shield, and I do know we ran into some, I guess I'd say some, some issues, some problems with some of it was his help, that he changed some routes around, that he didn't move pickup days, because he was free, you know, tried to get the routes a little better organized, a little more efficient. So I'm sure we, I know we had some phone calls on some items missing, some cans missing, I know we had some issues with some handicaps missing, I know we had, probably even before he started Steve, the new owner started, then we had some issues with some brush pickup. And, you know, and I think they have, I think they've been on the right track trying to correct this. You let me know if you're still receiving phone calls, and what those issues are. I know we've had a lot of discussion with residents on, on brush. People have a hard time realizing it's not City Greer, it's not ACE, on the length and the size of the diameter and this kind of stuff. That's a landfill rule. Doesn't matter which landfill we go to, that is their requirement, their rule. They don't measure it, but, you know, 10 foot, 12 foot, 14 foot, it's not even close to six. And, and then also the way they put it in the back of the truck, you know, basically in a haul load, in the back of the truck, it's timed, you know, if it's a great big pile, and they've got to sit there and what we call sweep it, stick a little bit of it in there, take the blade and sweep some of it in there, take the blade and sweep some more of it in there. It's a timer for them to, you know, get on down the street, pick up some more off. So, you know, I know we ran into several little glitches and some problems, and, you know, I think we have corrected a lot of those, and there again, I'm sure we still have a few. Steve and I have also worked on those workshops, I want you all to let you look at it. I want you, I want you to help me if you understand what, what we're trying to ask, what we're trying to tell the people, just more as size, and to help us. We've got a copy.
Yes, sir.
And then, you know, we've been also trying to use our tag system. When we saw it, Ricky, myself, some of our staff, ACE saw it, we've been trying to put one of these tags in the yard, and, you know, we simply were telling them, something's wrong, call us, let us tell you what's wrong, let us work through this. We get some response, but we don't get anywhere near as much as we would like. So I'm looking at trying to redesign this. I want to have a, more of a section on here that says, this is your problem, punch, or whatever, so I can maybe notify them a little different, try to communicate with them a little better, and tell them what their problem is. You know, sometimes they see it and they just say, if you don't want to pick this up. And a lot of times, right, we can't, but if you will do this and this, we can.
We, we've had some success with the placard, we, because it says, give us a call, and we'll, we'll get some calls. I think what can be most frustrating to neighbors, not necessarily to the person who's not collected, but what can be most frustrating to the next door neighbor, are the calls that you get, or the folks that ignore those placards. And, and I think that's been part of our issue, is that once we've identified it, and we've addressed why there, there's a problem picking it up, then it's that next step of, well, if we've, if we've advised what needs to be done, what happens if they don't? And what, and so we do have some that are just ignoring the notification.
We have a good fit of that, we actually have people to tell us, you're the type of looking at it, and you will move it. And, I mean, that's a common conversation that they hear Ricky, myself, Diamond.
Well, I think that's, when it comes to that point, it doesn't matter what you put out there, since, you know, let's, let's get that process started. As far as the placards go, I, I think that, and I always had the opinion that if you tell, don't tell somebody why you can't. I mean, I, I know that there's, there's a reason why we can't, but you need to lead them forward in that, well, this is how we can get it picked up for you. Because this, this regulation of six feet tall, six inches in diameter, that's been there for many, many, many years.
For ever.
This is not.
Been long time.
But to, let's take for instance, this brush pile here, I don't, I don't know what the length is, but there's some larger pieces in there, which I don't think that we could pick up. But, and if I've kind of, if I've got it in my mind, I'm going to ask Skipper, what can they do with those big pieces?
The landfill does not want in what we, you know, carry our yard waste.
Right.
Those do get to be a problem.
Well, here's what I think.
You're, you're exactly right.
Well, here's what I think, but here's why I think we did, because at one time, we have, and we still do, we've got a C and D dumpster at.
Yes, sir.
At the recycle center.
Yes, sir.
That should be an option for them, you know, hey, we can't carry it for you, but we have that container down there, and it may cost a small fee, but, you know, it's, we can't pick it up because of this, but we can help you, providing you a place that's close by.
I've offered people that solution, and of course, you don't have a mobile, I mean, you don't have a truck, you're not physically able, you'll get tired of looking at it. I mean, you know, I, I get that, and, but I totally 100% agree that I have a construction bed down there, I'll leave and let them put some brush down there, and we can get rid of it. You know, we, we don't mind doing that, but I've got to have a little cooperation that they can help me.
Right, I mean, I, and I think that's what you do, is you, you offer that instead of saying.
Instead of saying.
Instead of saying, hey, you've got a problem, call us, have Steve work his magic, do his, you know, word it in a different way, it's basically saying the same thing. Then you get somebody says, well, I'm not moving it, well, that's a simple, this in you.
Chuck and I worked together on a lot of these different piles where, you know, he goes or I go, and we, he, we communicate, have you seen, I'm looking at this, and this kind of stuff. He and I worked close on a lot of this stuff, and it works well most of the time, you know. It takes him time, because he's got some letter, he's got to wait his days, and then he's got to still, you know, do his, his stuff, and it can, it can drag out two, three months just laying there, and everybody likes, nobody's doing it.
Seems like somebody somewhere would want the wood.
Who wants pine wood?
Got to be somebody somewhere wants it.
I mean, that's my experience, who wants pine wood?
People with a sawmill.
You know, I'm saying, I, I don't have the answer to the bigger stuff, Mr. Erwood, but really, truly, I can let them put it down there, but there again, then we're going to have to carry that big stuff ourselves and pay a tipping fee.
Well, if we, if we pick up the stuff, we ought to work with ACE and say, okay, what are you going to charge to run a pickup truck out there? Pick up these, uh.
Oversized.
Yeah, oversized stuff, and dispose of it, and I, I don't, I can't see it being an astronomical fee.
My only problem is when they go put that in my load of six foot, six inch, they're not.
What they're not, they're not going to put it in your C and D dumpster.
They're, they're okay.
Because it'll work there, they don't, you can throw anything.
Okay, so see how that's sort of arguable for them.
Right.
I think part of the problem though becomes that you kind of open the floodgates, because you get a neighbor that cuts a tree down and puts it out there in nine foot lengths, and he waits long enough and we come haul it off, he's going to tell his neighbor, if you cut a tree down, just go ahead and leave it out there in the big stuff, and they'll eventually come get it, and they'll, you know, it's just on and on and on, and nobody ever. And I think part of the problem we run into is, particularly on the, on the bigger stuff, is the bulk of it's being generated by contractors. Most homeowners aren't cutting down 12 and 18 inch trees and leaving them outside the road.
Well, I, I agree, but if you go to the homeowner and say, okay, we'll send a waste hauler down here to pick it up, and then, you know, whatever that rate is, I mean, it'd be a market rate, I'm not saying give, give them a, give them a, a rate that's subsidized by us, give them a market rate, and then what is, what does that just care? I mean, they're making more money. That, that, and I, you know, and if we, because if you get to the point where somebody says, I just can't do it, I'm not going to do it, then Chuck goes down there, cites them, now we have the ability to get the money back on the taxes. So it's going to come back in a year or two, or either we'll get the property on tax.
What the tree trimmers that don't leave it at the curb, what do they do with their large stuff? What do they think? Probably they have a private slide, or they're taking it home.
Yeah, they mulch it, throw it back in the back of the truck, and they'll leave you the mulch if you want to keep it, but in most cases, they end up just hauling it off.
For you, haul it to.
City Greer.
Yeah.
Yeah, haul it to SR, and I want to say, I don't know what their fee is, but it's not a lot, to take a pretty substantial load in there.
Has this brochure, has, is this going to be mailed out, or has it been mailed out?
It has not.
Oh, okay.
And I want to, this is just a rough.
Right. I think it's as simple as ABC, you ought to be able to read that and understand what you can do and what you can't do.
What we find, and, and we are glad to do as much education as we can possibly do, we'll continue to do education, but this is what we find happens. If you're not cutting limbs this weekend, and this is delivered at your door, put on your garbage can, or mailed to you, you ignore it, you throw it in the trash can. This only applies to folks when they're doing it. And what we find is that when we're trying to communicate with 10,000 households, that it's difficult. It's not impossible, it's just extremely difficult. And, and so we've tried to use lots of different forms of communication. We use the TV station, we use the website, we use the annual leaf brochure, there's always information about it in the leaf brochure that's mailed to every home. We, we field telephone calls, we'll do stories in the, in the newspaper, but whether it's about leaf pickup, or it's about, what, what do I do with an appliance that I need to get rid of, or what do I do with, you know, brush and limbs, it, so when we talk about this issue of curbside pickup, it, it's, you know, it's, it's our garbage, it's our, our rollout container, it's our recycling, it is brush and limb, it is white goods, it's e-waste, and what do we do? So it, it's a much bigger issue, and you're absolutely right, communicating with our community is, is what we have to do, but we really do have to start, how, how do we use those resources? If we're going to do a direct mailing, and we're going to do a direct mailing to 10,000 households, well, we, we know that that direct mailing runs us about $7,000, is that?
Yeah.
You know, so for every direct mail piece that we do, it's about $7,000 to drop.
That, that's throwing good money after back. We could haul every bit of the brush off for $7,000, because it can't be $7,000.
Well.
Over time.
I, I would.
In a year's time?
Oh, absolutely.
950, 950 tons. We carried obviously last year 950 ton brush.
I'm talking about what's in violation, oversized, what's in violation of the ordinance.
We, we, we deal with, between Chuck and Skipper, we're, we're addressing multiple locations weekly.
Can I ask a question? If we handled brush pickup similar to leaf pickup, do you think that would make it more manageable? You know, for instance, if we got on like a regular schedule and said, we're only going to do brush pickup once a month, or once a quarter, or, you know, similar to the way that we pick up leaves, would that not be a reasonable solution?
You mean oversized stuff?
No, I just mean in general, instead of just making a commitment to pick up brush, you know, every week, you know, why not consider doing it on special occasions, kind of like our leaf pickup? I mean, since we've kind of ratcheted that leaf pickup down, I understand, like, for instance, in our neighborhood right now, you're spending a lot more time there, and, you know, all of the resources are there, but they're only there for a limited amount of time, and most people are very cooperative to it. In other words, they kind of, they work to get their, I mean, my neighborhood's going crazy right now, because everybody's working to get all their leaves out on the curb to take advantage of the service, but they know when it's gone, it's done. And so my point is that, you know, if you got this thing set up on a more regular basis like the leaves, you'd have a little bit more control over it, instead of, you know, just a pile here and a pile there, and, I mean, would that?
I was never thought of.
Well, the, the, the volume is different than leaves. It's, it's possible, I mean, that's certainly, I think it's something we might can take a look at. I really want, go back, Mr. Erwood, to your comment, you're, you're, you really are on mark, I, I don't disagree with you at all. One of the things that we have to recognize is that there isn't anything that we can't do. It's a matter of allocation of resources, and so if, if our objective is put it at the curb, we'll pick it up, no matter what it is. We just have to know that we have to be prepared to use different equipment for different types of material, and we have to be prepared to have increased costs in our tipping fees, because we're going to get some costs from the landfills, but we really don't have anything that we can't dispose of, that we, that we're collecting.
I, I don't, I'm not saying that we pick up everything without a cost associated with it to the producer of that, that curbside debris, but when you go back to oversized stuff, I, I really think that one of the options should be, that we can get it, but it's going to be X amount of dollars, and whether you send ACE out there, or, and I don't even know if we still have a chipper, but, run a chipper and a truck out there, and, and, and charge the, you know, the market rate, not a subsidy rate, but the market rate for it, you probably would have some takers for it. It's the same thing when you get construction debris late at the curb, we can't pick it up, but we have an alternative, and we've got a C and D dumpster at the, at the recycle center. I mean, I, I don't think, we could spend four times the amount in trying to educate the public, but we seem to deal with this every year, and it's not getting any better, I don't think that it will, I just think we've, we've got to either take a hard line on it and say, people, we don't pick this up, period. And as council members, we'll just have to tell the neighbors, you need to get to your neighbor and tell the city not to pick it up, or we're going to pick it up, but we're going to charge them.
And I think we can do that. I think it will obviously require notification, we, we have to have resources to, you know, for whoever's going to make, stop and make that contact. Most of the time, we don't find a live person, because our crews are working when folks aren't there. So we try to leave some communication that says, this is the problem, here's what we can do, and I agree, we can develop something, we can make it a package, whatever that needs to be, we can leave it at those locations. I think by ordinance, there has to, we, we have to know what is that reasonable amount of time that they can notify us to pick it up or not pick it up. If they don't, then it becomes an enforcement issue, and then there's that notification. Now, then we still have to give due process. We are required under the law to say, you're in violation, you have due process to abate your problem. And then if they don't do it within that period of time, we have the right to abate the problem. And where those timeframes can differ for us is those types of nuisances that are life and health, safety issues and concerns versus those that are just unsightly, and the, the timeframes have to be different.
Well, and some of that nuisance is going to be a violation by the contractor that did the work.
If it's a contractor, for us.
If they're aware that it's against our ordinance to do it, they're in violation.
It's illegal dumping, by our standards.
Exactly. So that would be who we would pursue, not necessarily the resident, but, and those guys, they don't want a blemish on their record, and it's nothing for them to swing back by there and pick it up. So, you know, like Rick said, that's probably the majority of the oversized stuff is done by a contractor. So we just contact the resident and say, hey, who did this? And if they say, oh, I did it, and say, okay, here's your citation. Oh, that wasn't me, that was, you know, Embry. Oh, okay, we know where to send the citation.
Right.
What's the law about that? That idea all the time, we, from the weekend, family member, all about two things.
Sure.
Sure.
They're not all going to be like that, but I would say a percentage would be.
Most contractors try and talk about it, but of course, it costs a little bit more for hauling off than it is for going to drop it for yards.
Well, either you want to pay the resident, or you want to pay the city, that's their choice.
Yeah, I think that's what you do, I mean, and it's the market rate, it's not, it's not, and it might be even more than the market rate, just a percentage too, or too high.
Well, the penalty should be high for them doing the, for, for a contractor dumping it at the curb. That should be high.
Yeah, there's a, because there is a difference, if it, if it's an abatement issue for us, if we are abating a nuisance, then our fees to do that are going to be substantially higher than market rate.
Because that's a penalty.
That's a penalty, yeah, it's, you know, you have violated the law, you have refused to comply, therefore, we're using public resources to, to clean up your, your mess. So those are under our fee schedule, and, and they're higher. Absolutely, if there's the ability for us to be able to communicate with the public that says, this is material that we, we can collect all of these things, but we can't collect this, and this is why, that we communicate with folks, we can't claim that, but we can offer you an alternative. You know, we have a contractor that will do that, and we can offer you an alternative. Our experience has been, the public that is willing to do the right thing, do the right thing upfront. Our issues that you see for stuff that's, that's out there for a long period of time isn't the easily resolved stuff. The easily resolved is really getting done. I can't say in every situation, but I hope, from the conversation that we had four weeks ago, I hope that you have seen an improvement since then. We've been, we've been working with our contractor and with our crews to, to help make that happen, so if that hasn't been the case, it's important for us to hear that from you, because we've been doing things to try to make that better, and if we haven't been successful, we need to know. If we have been successful, then it gives us some idea of some things that we need to do to address it further. I think one of the things that was mentioned when we, when we talked a month or so ago was, you know, is the penalty strict enough for those folks who, who don't comply? Those folks who just refuse and just say, I'll leave it out there, and you'll get tired of looking at it, and you'll eventually come pick it up? That's not a good situation, because it reinforces the neighbor to do what we don't want done as well. We really do need to be consistent in what we do, and I'll go back to say, we, we can pick up everything that's out there, if we're going to allocate the man-hours and the equipment to pick everything up, and pay the tipping fees. If we, if we're not willing to do that, then we have to be consistent in what we're communicating to the public and what we are and are not willing to do. So I don't think there's anything that you've said tonight that's not doable for us, but I do think that we're going to find that more of it is going to go to non-compliance, and, and for abatement than probably we would like.
Well, then, then we shouldn't be spending $7,000 a year on mass mailings, because you just said that most people are going to comply.
Most comply.
So this right here, I mean, this pop gets thrown on the ground with everything else that they're throwing out, so, I mean, it's, it's easier for us now to collect the, the dollars that we have to, to spend to abate it, so let's just.
I do think we have to communicate with the public, I do, I do think that has to occur.
Well, here's a suggestion for, for council, the next mailing, let's have a sheet, this is how we can help you. These items we pick up for free, or they're included in, you know, your property tax that you paid the city, and these items aren't necessarily allowed, but there's an associated cost, and to pick up this, it's X, and to pick up this, it's X plus five, whatever. And just have a price list, and then, you know, when we go out and find a pile that's not in compliance, we tag it, let them know, two weeks it's still there, Chuck goes and says.
Why don't, why don't we work to simplify, rather than add all these additions to it and whatnot? How much does a blue cart cost us? What do we pay for one?
Forty, eight, nine, twelve.
What if over the next five years, rather than doing $7,000 mailings and charging people fees and that sort of stuff, we've got everybody in the city that wants one, or everybody in the city with a blue cart, and say, you got a blue cart, we'll take whatever yard waste is in that blue cart every week, every two weeks, or whatever, we're not going to pick up curbside other than our leaf pickup, three times a year through that neighborhood. That keeps us from having, I mean, if they can cut log and get it in there, as long as it fits inside of that thing, then we'll, we'll pick it up.
But, but that's what he's saying, that's in violation of what the landfill would pay. That's the whole issue, it's not, it's, it's not the amount, it's the size. So if you get a, it's like you were saying, how contractors come in and cut down a tree, and, you know, if we have a price for that, and they say, okay, y'all come get it, but in two weeks, they haven't called us back.
But, other than being too big around, is the issue too big around the landfill issue, or is that our equipment issue?
Six inch diameter, you know, field.
Because they're grinding it?
Yeah.
And they'll, they'll take it larger than six, but they'll charge us, they'll charge us a tipping fee.
I think the fee on stuff like that, it might be more than that, and the fee used to be about $26 a ton. We're not paying to dispose from yard waste, unless we go with, with all oversized. Now, tree comes down on the road in the nighttime, and we have to like cut three ounces if they're on, I know I'll pay for that, and I, I, but I would put that with a, with other yard waste as such, I try to get that, so it's just, I'll pay for that tree or that log or whatever. But it's, I think it's about 30, 30 a ton of nighttime, well, so, yes, but I'm saying, we're not paying a tipping fee on yard waste a ton.
Except for that which is non-compliant.
Except for that.
Correct.
But if we went to cart service only, I mean, it'd be more the exception than the rule, I mean, you're not going to get anything that, in that it's going to be over 36 inches long, or whatever. I mean, you're not going to get anything that in there that's going to be over 36 inches long or whatever a cart is. And if, and if it happened to be larger than six inches, you're not going to get many pieces of it in there anyway.
Well, one of the, and we can make things work, but one of the things, please, but he can't say. But one of the things that can happen is that we could pick up 300 blue carts that are correct. And we can pick up two blue carts that are incorrect and we mix it in the load. It gets to the, to the landfill, they're going to charge us for the entire truck. That's what, that's what happens when they, when they put the wrong material. That's why we, it has been, we believe it has been best that we have certain prohibited material because when it gets mixed, they charge us for the entire load. They won't let us separate it. Truck dumps it, it's got the wrong stuff in it, they charge us.
Put a six inch hole in the top of it and let it go through this hole.
That's an idea.
We're not, we're not picking it up. You gotta find something like to go in it.
It won't fit in that hole.
If it wants to slide through this hole, we're not taking it.
I don't think that will work for all of us. I like that.
I like that, that.
But I do like your idea.
No, I mean, have the top that opens so you cram it full of clippings if I clip my bushes. But, you know, we don't take anything that's over this dig around, period. I, I don't know, I'm just trying to figure out a way. I mean, I don't, I'm with Jay. I mean, I've just, I don't, you know, I don't think we need to get into debris business without some associated cost to it. But rather than getting into us trying to figure out how much we're going to charge to go get it and whether or not it's got to go to Chuck or we're going to try and grind it or whether or not Ace is going to go out there and get it. I'm just trying to think of a way that we, that we say, we'll come get your bush clippings and if you've got limbs you've picked up in the yard, we'll take that. But if it's anything else other than what goes in this can, we're not taking it. And if it's bigger than the hole on the top of your can, it's not, it's not, we'll leave it in your, your can.
Or we can put, you know, I notice mother of the policy is that how they, they size like cubic yard, you know, basically 46 inch.
Well, we've got size. My understanding, we, we, our, our ordinance now says a pickup truck load. That's why, you know.
And it's done a lot of ways in a lot of different places. We, we've looked and when we talk with our community, sometimes curbside, we, we talk with folks that have moved from other communities and they'll, they're shocked at what we will pick up in a lot of places. It's not unusual that, that you have to bundle it. In some communities, you have to be able to bundle it and tie it. And, and you have to be able to physically lift it. And if you can't, then it's not collected. There are places that use the containers that says you put it in the container and we will do that collection. And if you want us to pick up 52 containers, you fill it up once a week for 52 weeks. And we'll, every week we'll dump the container. But we, but that's what we pick up as a container load each time.
Even with a hole, you still have somebody lift the lid and throw it.
And, and we, I think we recognize that those folks that if we say that you can't put anything larger than six inches or six feet long, if you do and we recognize it, I think we're all in agreement that the answer to that is we shouldn't pick it up. That if the, if the policy, if the ordinance says, no, we don't do it and we see it, then no, we shouldn't do it.
Well, with the things, the signs that are being put out now, are we not kind of doing that now? We, you know, we can't pick these up, you know, they're too big, I mean, the branches are too big or.
We're fine.
Yeah, yeah.
And so we really do come back to you to, to ask with, with 10,000 households that we're, that we're currently picking up, and that's going to grow to 11 and it's going to grow to 12, with the, with the households that we're picking up in your districts and what you're seeing and what you're getting calls about, I, you know, is there a substantial problem? Is there a significant problem? Or do we have a normal amount of regulatory issues that we kind of have to address in the normal course of business? Someone who puts stuff out that they're not supposed to, we tell them that they can't and they ignore us and we go and we deal with them. We're, we're trying to measure the degree of the problem. And has it gotten better or has it gotten worse? If it's gotten worse, is it because we've got more households and we see more? We're really trying to understand from your perspective how big the problem is.
Well, in my, in my area, I haven't received any calls. I called Skipper once because they didn't pick up my recycle thing, but I thought maybe they had switched dates and was doing that. But I think it is because they come in earlier and I just didn't have my stuff out there. So we've taken care of that now. But as far as calls in District Six, I have not received any.
Well, as far as big tree debris, it's going to be worse in certain areas.
Absolutely. We've got districts that, leaves are the same way. We, leaves and limbs.
And, and, you know, all the neighborhoods are built without trees. They cut everything down. So until 10 or 15 years from now, you're not going to have too many issues with that.
Are you having problems and, you know, I know three of y'all have more trees than some of the others. Mr. Erwin has been a little on the bigger side.
I haven't, I can't say that obviously.
Since the last, and I don't think it has to do with the number of households. I think it was management issues and, you know, we, I think that's been addressed between us three, you know, with the new ownership and stuff like that. Because they've even gone to a different, not a different day schedule, different time of the day schedule for their pickup. And they haven't, you know, missed anything that I know of. I normally get it, if there's any issues, the first one I'm going to get a call from is down on Palmer Street. And nothing from him since the last email.
I read that, right.
Yeah, nothing, you know.
Well, are you getting, are you getting people calling on other items? Or not just the garbage can, or not just brush, or, you know, where it's on fire, or on recycling, on e-waste?
Construction debris and e-waste.
Construction and e-waste.
I see more and more of that. The limbs and brush take, it kind of comes in cycles. You know, you'll see a whole lot of it in the spring and a whole lot of it in the fall and that sort of thing in our area down there. But what I see is people that, it's like they've torn out a set of cabinets or something and they stack it out there. It's a small rod or, you know, they.
And we kind of go back to Mr. Erwin's, that we, that we indicated them, there is a place that we have that they can dispose of that. We just don't collect it. There is a place to dispose of it, but we don't collect it at Curb.
I'm more than happy to take it down. I'm sorry, I'm trying to practice work. I need the best ones to do it. I need them to put it down there, put it in that construction box. Even if we do not charge, it's not that much of money. And I'm on the airway on that one. I'm just going to get the construction waste off the street. I mean, I'm just happy to get it off the street and I'll have to look at it. But I can give them my area right here real close, I feel like I could carry it. Chuck and I offered one of that deal last week. He got rid of the stuff, he didn't bring it up, it's gone.
The, the, the problem though is, and you've already identified it, is once we do that, we've made an exception to the rule. And I know the case where I stopped about a month ago and told somebody, we weren't going to pick it up. And his comment was, what are you going to do, write me a ticket? I mean, he knew we were going to get it sooner or later if it sat out there long enough.
Well, no, we should write him a ticket.
We, we should.
Yeah. But now, now when he, when, when Skipper says, I, we gave him a place to dump it, that's, that's something, that is an option that we already offer. If you recall, when we set up the recycle center, we stopped, we did have them put in a C and D dumpster for that particular purpose because at the time, that's, you know, you can't haul that to the landfill. But yeah, if, if that person, and I'm sure he's probably a, you should have stepped out when you take it, but let us go ahead and take care of that right there.
We're trying to figure out a way to do it. I've always called in different multiple items that people put on the permit. We're trying to figure out a way to start listing some of those items and give them, uh, items or give them up there. County, you know, for some items, where there's farmer, like, uh, give them e-waste, give them paint, give them some ideas. I know like you're talking to Eric, but this is an option for you. Steve and I talked about doing something on that. There again, it's like Mr. Curtis said, I'm not supposed to do any of that today. So that doesn't interest me and I'll worry about it another day.
And we still, we, our new garbage cans say no e-waste. Nobody knows what that means.
Well, that's sort of like having a log that's too big in your blue can. How many times do you think we're dumping a car battery or a couple of cans of paint or something like that that gets into somebody's garbage can? Goes in the back, goes in the trash bag, goes in the back of the garbage truck and winds up in the landfill. I mean, it's kind of the same.
We get it before we use the fine paint and there's a few minutes running out. So I got over to the child that is telling me, "Call me, I'm rushing you out."
Soon as we, soon as we compact, we find the paint, you're exactly right.
Car battery, another thing. Would it, would it, would it be cost prohibitive? And I, I like your idea about having a punch, but would it be cost prohibitive to create three or four different signs? One of them that is a round sign that says, this debris is too large for us to pick up, call this number. Have a sign that says, this is construction debris, we don't pick it up, call this number. This is e-waste, we don't pick it up, call this number. I mean, is that an option possibly?
Sure it is. I mean, we can have, what we put on the sign could be different so that folks know this is exactly what it is. So, yeah, that's why we're soliciting, I mean, whether we punch it, put it with a permanent Sharpie marker or we have a different sign. We, we can come with, you know, any of those, we'll try anything.
Maybe education occurs, curbside, right? Because if, if your sign is a little TV or a computer monitor screen on a piece of paper that says, a line to it and it says, we don't pick this up, call this number, then it either goes to public service or to Ace who says.
Oh, I got out here better. And this, you got to realize, Steve and I and Ricky and Harold, we came up with this. And, and it's worth some, but I still see it's got room for improvement. I didn't.
After using it, yeah.
More often than not, we see that laying on top of the pile of whatever is out there because they picked it up and turned it down in the pile.
That's.
We picked it up when they were taking it, this was under the pile, like a pile.
And, and quite honestly, and when that happens and we know that that's a violation of our rule, that's really where we want to go to non-compliance and, you know.
But I think, I think the difference in our two signs is we just get to a point where his sign notifies the residents that the item is ineligible. My sign says you're in violation. And so a lot of times when Skipper calls me and I put my sign out, 90% of the time that fixes the problem. And I think it's just the wording, violation, that gets everybody's attention. Because I, I think they see that sign, I think they just say, okay, sure it is.
So we need to skip out, Mr. Nice Guy.
And, and that was, you know.
If yours is out there, we get called.
Yeah.
Because now people are worried when you hear violation of, something could happen to me if this is not taken care of.
Now, I never have gotten a call where Chuck's put out, matter of fact, I get calls for Chuck to put out violations.
To get him to come.
Exactly. Because they love it because soon as that happens, generally, action occurs.
Well, his, your sign's got a number to call to fix the violation. That's why he doesn't get a call.
I mean, half the people's not even calling to find out what's wrong.
Well, because our objective is to educate and inform the public of what we will and will not do. That's our first thing that we're trying to do. Second to that, we're, we're trying to get voluntary compliance. And then if we can't get voluntary compliance, we go to an enforcement mode. But what we really want to do is shorten the window because our neighbors don't want to see that material out next door for a month.
Well, we know if you put out that sign, it's, it's going to be at least seven more days. No, that's wrong.
It could be long.
No, what I'm saying is it could be.
Before the truck comes back and next time.
Right, but the truck's not going to pick it up anyway. So un, unless they made arrangements with something that we don't have in place.
Or they went out and cleaned it up or did something.
You know, maybe when you, when you're redoing the signs somehow, you've got to work in a time limit whether it's seven days. And then there's no notification after that. They just get the sign and get a violation notice, get a ticket.
We, we will try those, absolutely. We, we are eager to implement things that will make it better.
I think if you're gonna, if you're gonna have the violation sign, I think you're almost obliged to do some type of mail-out, say, spelling out. And we had one of these one time, listing what you could and what the, what you'll take at the center. I think you almost have to educate them, at least attempt, so that when you do sign them with a violation, you say, well, this is what we mailed you last December or whatever, you know? And, and here it is on here. You know, at least you've made an attempt to educate them before you sign them.
Is the sign thing that we've put out there, I mean, is it? For, I lived in Charlotte and I know it's a larger municipality and it's a little different. They probably have different walls. But I remember I put something out on the curbside that was not supposed to be picked up and they terrified me. They, they wrote like a letter basically saying, this is your only warning and you're in, you're in violation. And if you don't fix the problem within X amount of days, there's going to be a fine associated with it. If it's here, if it's here in the next window, there'll be another fine, another fine. And it got progressive to the point where, and then I think the last step was, we'll come and pick it up if you don't pick it up and then we'll do a lean. But it was a progressive thing that, that really had some teeth to it. And it terrified me. And, and never again that I, that I even considered doing, you know, whatever. I don't even remember what it was. But I paid very close attention, you know, going forward to, to their policy. Even before, I just kind of, you know, I was kind of, whatever the neighbor said, yeah, just throw it out there and they'll get it. And, and we do seem to be Mr. Nice Guy and people take advantage of that. And, and it almost like what you're saying, it's ineligible versus a violation. And I understand due process and I get that, but it would be nice if we could get that started faster and give people a sense of urgency that this is, this is, this is not what we were looking for.
When you leave those notes out, the card out, do you take down the address so that you can try to send them a note, I mean, letter or maybe something?
Not send them a note, but here where we put them, we write that address down and what the issue is.
Yeah, I'm wondering how, like Lee had just said, if, if you take the address down and then, you know, you leave that, but then you send them a follow-up letter to say, we left you notification that your trash debris, whatever you had out the road could not be picked up, you know, and then go into it like that, just for the ones that overlooked the sign.
I actually would be, I would actually be more supportive of, if, if we're going to stop and put the tag out in front of the house, then let's put the letter in the door. Let's, let's don't go back and spend time writing a letter and looking up their address. I, I, let's figure out, I mean, if we've, if we've got to stop and do that anyway, let's try to get something into them immediately so that we're not spending more time. And the resource that we would do, the, the resource to do that would be less than coming back, looking up the address, finding out who lives there, mailing it. It could be a renter, it could, I mean, we, we run into all of those things. If it's in front of a house, we stick it in there and we figure out how to, to do that.
And back, back to what I said a minute ago about there being a warning. I mean, like I said, I was a first-time homeowner in Charlotte, I had no clue.
I, I like the idea of the notice being read and warning across the top of it that says, here's what you need to do.
I, I mean, I believe me, I wanted to be a law-abiding citizen. And so when he's, when they gave me that, I was like, I'm not, I'm in violation of the law. I want to do what's right. And from then on, I did what was right and it was nice to have the warning. But after that, it's ridiculous, you know?
Didn't ever need it again.
And that's why I think she asked the question, if we, if we are keeping track of, because you know they're repeat offenders. I mean, there's a guy that lives above me that seems, he cannot read yard waste only on his blue card. And every week, he puts garbage in that cart and every week they pick it up. I cannot believe.
It's blue card?
He does it every week.
From a legal standpoint, as far as my enforcement is concerned, the placards that we put out serve as their letter or notice in the same thing. So I don't have. So I don't have to, I do mail the letter in addition to, because of the system that we have set up. Once I post it, I send an email back to the secretaries and it creates a case and they automatically send the letter out. But as far as our legal proceedings, from a legal posting of the property of being in violation, that's all my good faith effort has to be.
Because you have posted the property.
I posted and identified this specific problem as being in violation. And I tell them that they have ten days to correct it, call me for the questions. So from that standpoint, they have been legally notified to where there's none applying.
Do you?
Well, maybe you just follow up on his addresses by doing that.
My question is, with Skipper's crew posting, does that, uh, what you're just saying, did you mean that that constitutes your, your good faith in posting the issue, or does it require you personally to go out?
He still has to, his posting.
Because I don't have to testify that.
Yeah.
I know that it was legally posted.
Yeah, but I like this idea that if we put a sign in whatever the problem is, that some sort of letter, brochure, notice or something is attached to the mailbox at the front door and all, or something in addition.
Do not put it in the bottom thing underneath the mailbox, because people do not clean those out.
And, and that is part of the issue, is that we, no matter what we do, someone will do something different. We, we do it at the front door and folks say, I never use the front door, and so we run into all of that as well.
It'd be a mailbox hanger.
Yeah, Scarlet Letter. Yeah, with a Brantley's shun.
I, I like that. We, we do know that you wanted to cover two items tonight, so we're, we're gonna, if we may, move over to roads. This conversation will continue to happen, uh, we will implement some, some modifications to what we're doing. We're glad to hear that there has been improvement since we've last discussed it, and that's what we're attempting to do as well. Um, I've asked Don to, to prepare some information.
Hey Chuck, hang on one second, I wanted to say something before we move on.
Okay.
I have noticed lately that there have been a massive, massive amount of signs that keep showing, especially We Buy Hums and Title Hums, and they have just been covering up the corners lately, and I'm not sure. You seeing that too?
No, it's just, it's gotten, you know.
I can forward some pictures to you.
The Title Hums people and mainly the We Buy Hums, the wholesale, they are just blanketing, especially, uh, I noticed the intersection of fourteen and twenty-nine. Yeah, the Longham intersection is covered up.
GNC's bad about it.
Super, but I think sometimes there you're going to run into county houses this corner, you know, the way we are.
I tell you what I've done before, is I've called the number, and I've told them, I said, you better remove these signs or I'm gonna have them trashed. I just call them and tell them, and it works sometimes.
Thank you, please continue.
Within the last year, Glenn and zoning has taken over that because it's kind of a zoning and assigning thing. As far as I'm aware, Glenn and Justin try to go out every Friday and they try to pick up as much as they can. So, so obviously, if that hasn't been as effective as it needs to be, we'll go back and talk about it tomorrow to, to see what we need to do to, uh, come up with a resolution.
Well, isn't it that after five o'clock on Friday, and that's what most people do, they'll put their signs out and then they go pick them back up by morning, like six o'clock Monday morning or whatever?
That's what GNC does.
I, I've actually seen, I've actually came to Green Hill a weekend and noticed that something was there that wasn't there while I was working during the week. So yes, businesses, GNC has done several times, and Glenn and I have had to, um, talk to them on that following Monday as well. So, so they're aware of, of what we're trying to do, they're just trying to.
A lot of businesses do, I know when we were at AT&T, we used to do it intentionally to make the other ones.
So we need to notify Glenn if, if there's an issue.
You can also notify me and I'll make sure that it gets to where it gets to, but Glenn is, Glenn and Justin have kind of taken over that. And like I said, normally they go out about every Friday after lunch and they, they go for trucking.
Because the signs really aren't a nuisance under our nuisance ordinance, they're not a property maintenance code issue. They're a zoning issue, and that's the reason that's directed over toward those folks there, and of course, Don.
We know where to go, we can let Glenn and Justin know, you know, we can't do the whole thing, but they probably go where they're supposed to.
And if we've got areas that are getting a real problem.
Some Title Hums is working Moncom Road like crazy, particularly the intersection of Brushy Creek and Intersection Avenue.
And what we know, they're paying for those signs, and if they keep disappearing.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
Appreciate it.
Don, if you'd just go ahead and share with us some information concerning our road program, and we'll answer some questions on that.
We have to talk about this, we're talking about basically, um, you know, what, what it costs, what we, what we have. Our plan is of the last time I checked, we had about a hundred and three miles of roadways on our jurisdiction. This past year, when we worked with Greenville County on the reception program, we got more data back than we've been getting previously, which is really good. As I go through that later, what I'm finding is that we are, we're paying, I think, I think we're getting reasonably good product for certain. Thirty-two dollars a linear foot reception program, so we pay this person. It's not a bad, not a bad deal. If you, if you run that out to a hundred and three miles, it's seventeen and a half million dollars, we do it all at once. But if we then go back and look at, we want to do this on a cycle, twenty, twenty-five years, whatever the case is. We're really riding on about a twenty-five year cycle right now. Uh, and that then would say that we would spend roughly about sixty-five hundred dollars per year we need to keep putting in the pot to keep that going.
Sixty-five hundred?
No, sixty-five, wouldn't be sixty-five hundred.
Is that all? Per mile?
Oh, per mile.
When you're, when you're saying a hundred, you're saying.
Wow, thank you a lot of my.
A hundred and three miles is what we currently maintain, or a hundred and three are currently in the city, it's what we maintain.
We maintain.
Got you.
So based on all of that, with what we, what we do with Greenville County and what we do with Spartanburg County, we're a little touched to have them have a funded cycle for a twenty-five year, uh, completion, that we go for the other nine hundred miles for every twenty-five years. We do need to do a little bit more work as part of their county, they're not, they're not quite as speeded the way Greenville County is. And they, and we've had a little bit of sort of inconsistency in how they choose to fund their side every year, but we're getting pretty close to that. We currently have a number of subdivisions, I think there are eight or nine that are already in books that are, that are under construction. We also have Blue Ridge Plantation, which has a fairly significant amount of roads that are already in place, but we're not taking them over yet. Looking at all of those, we have about eight miles of roadway that will be taken over, that will be added to the hundred and three. Sometime probably in a year and a half, as those subdivisions vary through the construction. So as we look at both what we have and what we may want to take over, we need to make sure that we look at it from that same viewpoint. That every mile we take in, you know, we need to add money each year, about sixty-five hundred dollars per mile in order to keep our four land forty-one that should go to the dock.
So this is the conversation that we had roughly fifteen years ago in terms of maintenance.
Yes.
If that's what, what I'm gathering here. So just in round numbers, we're talking about a hundred miles that we've currently got, a hundred and three miles, sixty-five hundred dollars a mile. So we're talking about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year just to maintain what we've got. Okay.
And if you're willing, so we've come pretty close to doing that, if you want, if I want to further to say, that network site, when I look at some of these subdivisions, somewhere in there, fifty dollars for every block that comes in, that's what you need to put in the pot. Just enough of what we want to work with. We get a hundred houses, we get a couple of, you could need to drive a hundred and five, because that would ultimately be a part of what we got to maintain. And we're saying that basically to make sure we're still looking at what we want to do. We're, we're looking at sometimes we have questions, can we take over state roads, and we do a lot of things that, that we may want to add to it. And sure we can, if we do, we need to make sure we, we look at that same funding process as a part of what we maintain under our belt for, for maintenance.
What? I'm sorry. Uh, I, I know we do matching, what, what is our total budget Greenville and Spartanburg County side?
Last year, we, we put two hundred thousand a box and Greenville County put two hundred a box. So we did four hundred in Greenville County, this, this for twenty-fifteen, I think we went to fifty. So we'll spend five hundred thousand dollars in Greenville County. Last year, um, in Spartanburg County, we matched ninety thousand, they're ninety thousand. Um, we took that from the, uh, the licensed fees that we get from Spartanburg County. We only get about, about around sixty thousand a year in license fees. And we want to continue that relative amount of participation, we're not quite covered in Spartanburg County.
So it needs to be that.
We need to leave that a little bit. And then, and this year Spartanburg County has not been as consistent as Greenville. And in past years, they had fully funded maintenance of city streets, but they didn't do it that year. So one year you might get a good, good number done, a year or two you might not get any number. This past year, they have started the process of, of, of looking at participation. And I hope we can continue that and make that more systematic as we go through time.
Well, obviously, we've been, over, over time, we've been putting a lot of money.
Getting a little bit pretty close.
Are we pretty close or we've been on?
I think, I think because of Spartanburg County's inconsistencies, we have problems with a little light on that side.
But you were saying right now, we're about a twenty-five year cycle, and that's what it ought to be, correct?
I don't think that's a bad cycle, and you could certainly use to make a claim as to what you would have, but for residential streets, you call with a good number.
Do. Is that all the money? We don't have a line item for paving that's separate from the matching?
Well, we, we put, we, we have a, um, what we call an escrow account. We, we designate those funds for paving, and then out of the paving fund, we do our match on the Greenville County side. You know, we receive some dollars from them, uh, from their, uh, vehicle maintenance fee. So that fee that's paid through the county tax, a portion of that in Greenville County is returned to us, about ninety-eight thousand dollars, I think we just did the letter. About, about a hundred thousand dollars, and we put that into the pot. And then all of the money that's collected on Spartanburg County side, they return to us. We get a hundred percent of that money, get about forty percent of it on the Greenville side. But we take all of that money and we put it into the pot. But we have to separate the match county by county, we can only use the dollars in each. And then we, and then we put additional dollars into it above that as well, uh, which is getting us to about six hundred and fifty thousand. Is about where, I mean, it, it may go six, it may go seven, but it averages about six hundred and fifty thousand that we're able to do with the match.
So that was the numbers you give Skipper?
And that's close to having things on that twenty-five year cycle. I still think we need to pay a lot of attention to Spartanburg County. A little bit, they've been less consistent over the years than until this one, they've just started the process. We need to cross that. The point is, as we add some divisions, as we, whatever we're adding, we need to consistently, year by year, look at what we're doing, so we're not inadvertently putting our stuff back on hold.
And of course, one of the things that we're monitoring very, very closely, uh, is that we know that there is a, uh, there's a House Subcommittee that's meeting in Columbia right now, that is reviewing, uh, road infrastructure statewide. Uh, and one of the things that they are reviewing is whether a portion of state roads should be sent back to local government. Now, sent back to local government, is that to the county, is that to the county, uh, and, and the municipality is, I mean, you know, how is that being? All of those are very unanswered questions for us right now. Uh, the Municipal Association has taken a very different position than the County Association. The Association of Counties has literally said to the Subcommittee, no, under no circumstances are counties to accept state roads. The Municipal Association, on the other hand, has said, well, perhaps, and we want to be part of the solution, but what is the funding mechanism that will be put into place to help make that happen for those state roads that are located within municipalities? So there's a, there's an awful lot going on in Columbia, and what will come out of that, I have, I suspect sausage. I mean, it's, you know, we, we really don't know, uh, what will come out of that. We do know that the state is not accepting any roads into their system. There, there's a moratorium on state highways, so no roads are going into the state system at this point, but they have an awful lot. And, and they're trying to determine what to do and how to do, how it's funded, and we'll, we'll see how that all shakes out. For us, we've, we've always done some work on state roads. It's not unusual that we'll fix a pothole on a state highway. It's, actually, it's pretty common for us, uh, because it, we, we, we think it's what we need to do to keep things moving and make it safe. They work with us and they help us in many instances as well. We maintain right-of-way on state roads in many places. U.S. Highway twenty-nine is a great example. We maintain Highway twenty-nine from Gap Creek all the way up to Taylor's Road, or to Ferry Road. To the Target, to, to that area there, we, we maintain that. Um, if, if that was maintained under the state maintenance system, it would be unacceptable to us. So we contract and we maintain that. Uh, we mow a, a lot of right-of-way that's in the state system now, but we don't do it all. We'll do work around bridges where there are sight distance issues, and, and we'll do that now. We'll spray, um, weeds in curb and gutter on state roads because it is so unsightly coming into our city that we do that to the best of our ability. We, we, so there are things that we currently do. Sidewalks, the state builds a road, puts a sidewalk on it, from that point forward, it's ours to maintain. They do not maintain sidewalks. So we, we've always been in the business of doing some amount of work. But another example, Vern Smith Parkway, we don't mow the Vern Smith Parkway. It's a long parkway, it's, uh, there's a lot of area to mow. The state does it on their schedule, which is three times a year, I believe, and that's what the Vern Smith Parkway gets. If we were to take that on, we would need resources to do that, and we're, you know, we're reviewing what, so again, this is kind of that, very similar to the curbside. We can do what you direct us to do, we'll simply need the resources to do that, whether that's equipment or personnel, whether that's paving roads and bringing roads into our inventory, or maintaining right-of-way, um, we, we can do those things. But we're going to be taking on more, um, roadway, so based on the amount of roads that we have now, it looks like about five percent, we could be maintaining, we could be adding about five percent a year into our inventory. And if, um, and if that's the case, we need to be prepared moving forward that additional dollars are allocated just to maintain the city streets.
Five, five miles a year, that's what we're at?
Well, based on what we've got.
Based on what we've got right now.
If that were to kind of average out over time.
Thirty, we, we need to be adding, was it thirty, thirty thousand, forty thousand dollars to the budget?
Every year, just to maintain that which is coming into the system.
Well, you know, I've, I've asked for a lot of this information, and I've given you some, sent you some emails, but my thought about taking state roads over was not to just fix a state problem. I mean, if, if, if we, I know that if we took it over, we'd. I mean, if, if we, I know that if we took it over, we, we would maintain it to our standards, which is a higher level than state, of course. But I think there's a lot of things that we as a city have been trying to do that if, if we could afford it. I, I, I didn't think that our numbers were so close on, on paving. But we, we want to do gateways, we want to do sidewalks, we want to do issues with traffic, we, we want to, we have issues with traffic come, we storm water. And I'll give you an example, and it's self-serving for District One, but it's, but it's a, it's an example. You've got Brushy Creek from Bunkham to South Main. And then crossing South Main, you have Cannon. Well, Cannon should be a city road, period, but it's not. It's a state, it's a state road. Now, all we would gain out of that is being able to govern traffic speeds. I think we have to do something, you know, now, I don't know if it's changed. We have, if you drive down, you've got a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit sign and then a few more feet down, you've got a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit sign. What that was is a city because state couldn't get to it and state got to it and put theirs out. But anyway, if we wanted to do, say for a signage issue, there's enough room on Brushy Creek that you could put islands or signage, you could, I, I would assume that you could use stormwater fees to do curb and guttering. And create, create a continuation of sidewalks from where the new apartments are going to be to the city park, past the city park, and then tie that into the sidewalk that dead ends at Brushy Creek and James. Is that right?
I remember that.
Yeah. But, but that was my whole thinking behind this. Plus, talk about maintaining rights of way and, and the bridges. When we, normally when we go, say for the bridges, to go out and trim that mess back, it's well beyond needing to have been done. I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's months past. And we go and do it and you can tell the difference, but that's not to our standard. And I was, my question is, do we even have the resources, whether it's money, whether it's equipment, manpower, to put just the bridges and just the rights of way? Did you say that we go out and maintain that's not even ours? Put them on a, a, a maintenance schedule that, that conforms to what we want? And if not, you know, if we don't have those resources, what does it cost?
Sure. And, and I do not believe that we have those resources today to be able to put it in a, in a maintenance schedule. We, we kind of hit and miss where we see that there's need. Mr. Burns has done some, some, some research on what it would take for us to do that. So he's compiled those numbers and, and if, if it's council's desire that we get, that we, that we want to improve the appearance of our city by improving those state entrances, absolutely, we would be prepared to, to offer that even as an alternative in the budget. Then we could say, here's what we do today, and if we wanted to go to Program A, B, or C, here would be the associated needs to do that, whether that's equipment or people to make that happen.
Well, you know, and I've said it before, that, that I, I feel that it's a key to economic development. And Mr. Smith and I had a conversation about this and he, he had a different take on it. But in our GSA paper that came out recently, there was an article that quotes the president of North American Michelin. And he talked about state roads. And he said, and they quoted him to say, if the South Carolina roads do not improve, Michelin may have to go elsewhere to, to grow or to develop new properties. I don't want, I don't want people looking at Greer saying, well, they are, they're behind their roads. The roads that are behind it, the state roads, but people don't differentiate that.
We, we run into that constantly, that folks driving down the street, they don't know the difference between a state road, a county road, and a city road. We know the difference, but the public wouldn't know.
And to, to the council, I, I don't, I don't, you guys have any appetite about it. I just think we need to have a discussion about it. And of course, I guess we need to talk about numbers, which that drives everything.
Yeah. Interesting thing about it is, Jay, we've, we've had this discussion some. It's interesting that the state not only is not accepting any new roads into the system right now, but from what I understand, with talking with others that have sought to do exactly what you're talking about, it's a fairly complicated process to even improve one of their roads. I mean, we can't just go do signage or do improvements or do medians or do landscaping without an incredible amount of permitting and paperwork and applications and that sort of thing to even do improvements to the road. You wouldn't think it'd be that hard. Now, I understand that, that SCDOT is, is becoming more open to allowing improvements to their roads. And I think you look at communities like, particularly like Greenville, that has done, that have done some significant improvements to their entryways and roadways. But it certainly has been on their dime that they, you know, that they've done it. I, I think the one thing that concerns me in this whole conversation, and you've already brought it up, is that we're incredibly skinny on where we are positioning wise on our, on our, our road program. And I've always felt pretty good about what we've been able to do. It does concern me that we're using a matching program though, to achieve that level. And I don't know that there is any guarantee that that program will continue. I mean, do they make that decision annually? I mean, that's not the policy, is it?
It's an annual allocation.
You know, and we've got Spartanburg now doing it, but I don't think there's any, there's any guarantee that that program's going to last beyond the next year.
And part of the, the proposed revisions that the House Subcommittee is looking at is a restructure of the C-Fund committees statewide.
Well, when budget time rolls back around, then that's something that we need to, you know, look at as far as increasing the amount in our line item.
It, it's been a good investment for us because, again, for every dollar we put in, we're able to match that with another dollar. And so it, it's enabled us to do some things that we truly would not have been able to do otherwise. And I think that's why we've been so committed to that match program, is to use it as long as it's available and being, and being funded on, on the county side.
I think it's a conversation we're continuing to have. I, I do know that we, we have, have talked in the process of this long range planning that we're doing about the potential to not only identify, but to begin to create some gateway signage. And I know that the administrator and I have had that conversation in, in particular regards to a couple of different places located throughout the city. So hopefully in two thousand and fifteen, we'll, we'll begin to see some, some stakes in the ground at some different places where things can begin to happen. But I think you're right. When we roll around to budget time this year, we're going to have to, we're going to have to take a, a pretty critical look at what we're going to do in that regard.
But, but I feel very comfortable that we've got a, a good handle on what some of those numbers would be based on what we want to do. And, and I think is, what may be appropriate is either prior or when council does your planning workshop in early two thousand and fifteen, that may be a good opportunity for us just to, to disclose, we've got them now, but I mean, just to put those numbers out and say, you know, with, with certain amount of dollars, this is the certain amount of work that could be achieved.
I know we're running out of time and they don't, you guys have numbers, right? Can, can, can they prepare an email?
Absolutely. We, we can prepare, because that was basically looking at personnel cost and equipment cost and then how much area, and really right of way maintenance is what this was relative to. Bridge and right of way. And when I say bridge, I'm talking about cutting back, not, not structural. Yeah, this is not structural. That's a whole nother, a whole nother ballpark.
Well, and, and to your point as well too, and I think one of the things that we've got to understand is that as, as the state continues to move forward in terms of restructuring, what they're going to do roadwise, I think it's fairly evident, at least from the conversations that I have heard at the state level so far and from the climate politically in the state, that the state's focus is going to be on roads. So sidewalk, landscaping, trails, right of way, all that kind of thing is going to be secondary to roads. Road improvement, road repair, you know, that kind of thing. So that, that may be one of our bigger opportunities and maybe where we can address some of these issues that, that you've raised tonight, is that I think our biggest opportunity is going to be in those areas because I don't think you're going to see the state spending any money on any of those projects.
We'll, we'll get that prepared and sent to everyone. Glad to.
For those of you that have just joined us, we are wrapping up a workshop that started earlier this evening and we'll move to our regularly scheduled rare city council meeting just shortly. Since we have been in session for right on an hour, I am going to recess us out of the workshop and we'll take a short break before we start our regularly scheduled council meeting. So with that, council, we stand adjourned from the workshop, we'll reconvene and, you know, let's reconvene in about ten minutes for our regularly scheduled meeting.